I call 315 Broken Arrow City Council meetings order. In case we have Pastor Scott Kill.
Father, we are so thankful to live in this city, to live in this state. We are grateful for the privileges and the welfare that is given here. And Father, we ask your blessing, especially on our city leaders as they discuss things, as they make decisions. We ask you to be with them in their health, in their livelihood, and also in the wisdom that they use. We pray this in his name. Amen.
Scott? Roll call, please.
Scotty? Yeah. Fox?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Budy?
Here.
Starman?
Here. This Dan, Joint Counsel.
Slute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five is consideration of consent agenda. Item R, S, T, and U I need to remove at the conflict. Do you have items to be removed? R, S, T, and U.
Move to approve the consent agenda between items R, S, T, and U. Question second. Roll call, please.
Tiffany? Yes. Park?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Budy?
Yes.
Starman?
Yes. All right. Consideration item number six, consideration of items removed from consent agenda. Entertaining motion or second. Move to approve items R, S, T, and U. Motion second having been made. Is there any further question or discussion? Roll call, both, both, please.
Tiffany? Yes. Fox?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Budy?
Yes.
Starman?
Item seven is public carrying appeals presentation recognition and awards. A presentation to recognize Broken Arrow students Braden Price and Grace Robinson for the subjects to the United States Air Force Academy, class of 2021. Jennifer?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jennifer Hook's Executive Assistant. I'm honored to introduce this item and tell you about the Air Force students we are recognizing tonight. Grace Robinson was a Broken Arrow Youth Counselor for two years and served as the Youth Counsel Mayor. And Braden Price was a Youth Counselor his senior year. And both students graduated from high school in May, one year ago, and since then have received appointments to the United States Air Force Academy. And a few weeks ago, Counselor Wendy happened to meet Braden's mother and asked if we could host a presentation at tonight's council meeting due to the fact that both students were not able to have a public ceremony on their graduation day. And Grace cannot be with us tonight. She's in Washington DC on summer break, but we still wanted to recognize her and will mail the certificate to her. So at this time, I would like to call up Braden up front. And Mayor, if you want to hand the certificate to him, and then I will introduce the admissions liaison.
Congratulations.
So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ed Kennedy. He's one of the local admissions officers from the Air Force Academy.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. My day job, I'm a school superintendent in the region, and I do not have a military background, but this is very special to me as a liaison officer. I work with young people around this part of Broken Arrow, and this is one of the favorite things I do. Another, actually a neighbor of mine, I am a Broken Arrow resident, but a neighbor of mine is also an admissions liaison officer. He was my daughter's admissions liaison officer about eight or nine years ago, and they got me hooked into this. And it is one of the favorite things that I do. I'm going to read a script to you. It is rather dry, but it is a script that we do. And Brady and Grace were kind of shortchanged in that both of those young individuals graduates in 2016. And in normal instances, I would read this script in front of throngs of people at a graduation or at an awards assembly. But in this instance, they kind of missed out on that opportunity because they both got late notifications. They both, Grace went to the Air Force Academy Prep School, and Brady went to Northwest Prep Academy for the Falcon Foundation Scholarship with the Air Force Academy. So I will read through the script, and Brady, if you'll come up, please. Then if you want to ask Brady a question or me a question about what this entails. The other gentleman, Major McLaughlin, he was Grace's admissions liaison officer this year, and he made a comment that Broken Arrow does have another student that graduated this year, Lana Hall. She's an award winner. She's got an Air Force Academy appointment this year. And we also have a young man, I think that may receive a prep offer. So Broken Arrow is rich with this this year, and these young people are going to be rich because of this. So with that, it is my pleasure today to represent the United States Air Force and Director of Admissions of the United States Air Force Academy, Colonel Carolyn Bencheck, as I present Braden Price and Grace Robinson in absentia with appointment to the United States Air Force Academy, Colorado Springs, Colorado. This appointment is equivalent to being offered a four-year scholarship to the top-tier college with all expenses paid. These include tuition, housing, food, books, medical and dental benefits, as well as a monthly living stipend. Appointments to the Air Force Academy are very competitive, and most successful applicants are in the top 10, 20% of high school students across the United States. Braden and Grace are two of only 1,400 candidates offered an appointment nationwide. Approximately 1,200 have accepted the offer and the challenge of the United States Air Force Academy. As Academy cadets, Braden and Grace will be joining a select group of students training to become future leaders of character in the world's greatest air and cyberspace force. During four years at the Academy, Braden and Grace will participate in leadership development programs that include flying, freefall parachuting, athletics, and martial sports. They will participate in military training and foreign exchange programs around the world. They will pursue a college degree of their choice in one of 27 academic majors ranging from aeronautical and electrical engineering to history and political science. Braden and Grace will also study Air Force history, military affairs, philosophy, management, and obviously leadership. After successfully completing the Academy's four-year academic character and leadership development program, Braden and Grace will graduate with a Bachelor of Science degree and be commissioned as Second Lieutenants in the United States Air Force. I spoke with Grace the other night, and she indicated that she would like her career field of study, good for you guys, in political science or something of that nature. She is interested in a career field such as JAG Corps or to serve in some intel or foreign relations part. Brady's indicated to me he is interested in computer engineering as a degree. Interestingly enough, I don't know how that degree is going to fit in because he also wants to jump out of planes as a Stover Pro, which is the Air Force equivalent of Navy SEAL. So maybe it's get in behind the lines and then infiltrate the enemy. Brady and Grace will have a role as an officer. They will have the opportunity to be a part of something bigger than themselves. They will have the difference to make, a difference on the, they will have the chance to make a difference on a global scale, and they will be part of an operations team that actually impacts the flow of world events. I envy both Braden and Grace as they embark on this adventure. Truly, the sky is not the limits. Brady, if you'll come forward. On behalf of the United States Air Force Academy, your certificate of appointment. Congratulations. The point I'm not supposed to talk about is what is the value of an Air Force Academy appointment beyond an appointment? They have strict instructions here where you're not to talk about that, so I'm not going to. But I did read the other day that a, an appointment to the United States Naval Academy is now valued at $432,000. So this is why, that opportunity to go to MIT, Stanford, Yale, Harvard, or any of the top-tier institutions around the nation. So Brady and Grace have truly done something wonderful, as have the other Broken Arrow students that recently joined us. If the Council, if you're through with us, we might take a picture of all of us together for posterity and/or the fact that Brady was in fact, one of the things that he used on his resume was his involvement as a youth city counselor. And that really was a big deal, and that really impressed the liaison officer panel when they interviewed him. I would assume they have to get a nomination from a congressman or a senator, US Senator or US Congressman, and I'm sure that came up in that discussion, too. So if you have a question for me, or maybe you may have a question for Brady about what this process entailed, because it is big deal.
So what point in your life did you decide you wanted to go to the Air Force?
I was like 11 years old when his daughter was doing the Air Force Academy, and I was kind of on the first taste of it. Ever since then, I've been nonstop shooting for that.
My brother was career Air Force, wanted to be a pilot, and discovered in his first time out that he passed out, and they suggested he take another admittance to the career in the Air Force. So he was in community.
I did car sick, actually.
Certainly as a city councilman, we're certainly proud of our new city council and successes that we see in them. And I was just really elated to see this about your appointment, and Grace's also. Certainly exemplified the leadership that we hope to instill in our U.
Thank you.
Well, I've had the opportunity to spend quite a bit of time as I did council in the parks with Braden and Grace, and you do have the cream of the crop here. We're proud of the new crowd that they were part of us, and proud to see them move forward. Congratulations. Keep up the hard work if you need to.
And let's give credit to your family, because I'm sure they were instrumental in getting you to this point.
Well, congratulations, and it's going to be an adventure for you, I'm sure, and we're proud of what you've done. Want to get a picture? That'd be great.
There used to be a link on the website that says it takes brain, bronze, guts, and determination, and that's just the application process. It truly is like that. And Mr. McLaughlin indicated that he wished he could be here tonight. Brady's liaison officer is actually from Tinker Air Force Base, and she's on a mission on the East Coast tonight. So Colonel Kristin Thompson indicated she wished she could be here with you guys as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, for putting this together. Item eight is the citizen opportunity to address the Council on general topics related to city business. We have one person sign that, Michael Nakers. Just taking any matters.
My name is Michael Nakers. It's kind of hard act to follow. Mine don't sound quite so important now. If I can just kind of get this organized here. The reason I kind of speak tonight is requesting a special permit for a person like, say, I lived in the Valley Ridge addition, that's also in Board Four. The permit I was requesting was for a carport. I know that in my addition, there's no covenants, and there's also not a home association. And I've lived here for 35 years, so I didn't really think this was going to be an issue. I'd seen carports in the area, especially just east here, also in Board Four. But when I did check into it and was looking at a permit for it, I found out that there's this thing called setback. And I was informed about it, and I found out that setback rule is mainly, well, actually kind of two felt first, in building when they do the plan and uniform development, the setback for all houses coming uniform that way we don't have an helter-skelter out here. And also the other thing was for aesthetic value, you know, you can go out and you can look, everybody's house is even, it looks good, and there's no six-foot fences between you and your neighbor, and visibility issue. So, and I, from the check-in, I found out that there was actually a 50-foot rule in there, 25 from the center of the road to my property, then the 25-foot setback. When I measured it all down, I found that the area in front of my house was six inches, not enough for a carport to go in there, even if I could have got that permit. So that's the reason I'm here. If I may, I have some handles I'd like to pass out. Very quick. You have five. All adjusters? Okay, here's one. Two. Okay. Okay. This is Craig. On the first page, I just wanted to kind of point out that I did mention that the setback was initially for building additions and everything. Second part, I thought was a two-part thing. In Chapter 4.2, which is Measurements and Exceptions, Section B, Setbacks, One, General Setback Requirements, A1, it states that setback shall be unoccupied and obstructed by any structure or portion of a structure from 30 inches above grade upward, provided, however, that fences, walls, trellises, poles, posts, ornaments, furniture, and other customary guard accessories may be permitted in any setbacks subject to the height limitations and requirements limiting obstruction of visibility. Looking at that, that's the reason I was asking for maybe a permit or special permit for that. If you can flip over to the first picture, it shows the carport with a pickup on it. That is an open construction, like the one I was looking at from Standard Builders. As you can see, it's open all the way around, there's no covering on either side, and the top thickness of it would approximately be about eight inches. On the second page, you see where it shows another version, it shows a tow car in there. Again, you can see that this is all open, there's no obstruction to visibility in there. And also this one here is kind of color matched, it would look like the one I was proposing for my, my house. On the third page, it is a sign view of my address, 415 West Los Angeles Place. Of course, you can see that long shot there from my house.
Two times up.
That's all right. Anyway, that's what I was wanting to show, that if I had a carport, it would look like those two proper construction, not a two-foot lengthed, there would really be no obstruction to visibility as applied to the one's second setback rule, which is states about trellises and poles and stuff like that. It wouldn't obstruct any visibility, although it would be in a setback.
Well, of course, we can't make the decision on anything tonight, and it has to be on the general board to make a decision, and it's not something that we normally do as one of the board adjustment type items, I would believe. And probably use Michael Skates, head of Development Service, and talk to him about the permit, or have you already applied for one?
I've already talked to him about permits, and they stated the same thing, 25-foot rule and setback doesn't need to be in there. And basically was the only avenue I had was to come and speak to the Council concerning this. So that's what I did tonight. Knowing that there's at least, I counted at least 80 back here in Board Four. Initially, I thought that, since I've seen so many of them, that this would probably be something I could do if it was built with a proper construction and met certain building criteria that the city would say.
We usually don't vary, vary some on front, lots of setbacks. I've never, something I've done, and Michael, you may, you know, I'm not known to have done that, so, but I do believe it would be a board adjustment item.
I believe that that's correct. That's what I was thinking as he was talking, that it needs to be adjusted, but I need to go back and check the statute and also check the ordinance, and so I'll go get my card and your card and my hat and all.
Okay. I was being, I was curious, when I talked to him, he said, I believe it was incorrect by a point in front of Board of Adjustment, that was $1,000 just to go in front of Board of Adjustment and ask for a variance. There are some permit fees.
I believe he's correct. There is fee to go apply for variance, but, you know, I think, I'm not familiar with his carport or his application, but I would be well advised that staff probably explain to him that, you know, it'd be difficult to go to the Board of Adjustment because you have to prove a hardship. And in this case, I don't think he would be able to provide a hardship or prove a hardship.
I think that one of the points he's making, though, which is not lost, is the fact that there are so many houses that have a carport now. I think it'd be fair to explain why those exist and he's.
And I agree with you. I think if we can have an opportunity to review his address and look around, some of the carports that he's referring to have been there for a long time prior to several of our zoning ordinances, and so they're kind of grandfathered in.
Yes, sir.
Other ones that are, have been put in do meet the setback requirements, but I'm not familiar with his address or the exact location, but I'd like the opportunity to review it and then contact him, and then I'll get back with you on it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item nine is general council business, 9A, consideration discussion of possible approval of the Resolution 1020, a resolution of the Broken Arrow City Council adopting fiscal year 2017 to 2018 annual budget for cities.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of Council, those in attendance tonight. Before you for discussion, consideration, and possible approval, is Resolution 1020 a resolution of Broken Arrow City Council adopting the fiscal year 2018 annual budget for the city in accordance with provisions of the Oklahoma Municipal Budget Act, which I think Councilman Clippy was learning a little bit about today in their orientation. Just for background purposes, there is a fact sheet that's going to be submitted to the City Council. The proposed fiscal year 2018 budget was presented to the City Council at a special meeting on May 22nd, where we actually went through the budget document and the letter from the City Manager's Office with respect to the proposed spending plan. A public hearing in accordance with the applicable laws regarding the proposed fiscal year budget was presented, held, actually, excuse me, held on June 5th, just a week ago. You know, based on the discussions and input received from the Council, I am proposing to the City Council a budget totaling just over $249 million. There is an Exhibit A that is a detailed spreadsheet which outlines the final numbers for the financial plan, and I'm asking for your consideration of the budget for that kind of fiscal year. And I would like to make one clarification. In further research, we have determined that back on November 7th of 2016, the City Council actually did amend the emergency fund balance requirements, so no action will be required by the City Council later this summer. Be glad to answer your question.
Any questions, Michael? Staff, do we have a question?
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 1020 adopting fiscal year 2017/18 budget and authorize execution.
Second? Question, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Clippy? Yes. Park?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Budy?
Yes.
Starman?
Yes. Item nine D, consideration discussion of possible approval of an authorization to execute a master lease agreement between New Senior Wireless PCS, LLC, ATT Mobility, and the city of Broken Arrow. Go then.
Yes, sir. You may recall that this is actually titled from the last meeting. We have been in contact with AKMP's attorneys, and they indicated that they're in the shade and in the process of going through. The City Manager has made a civil meeting with outside Council, the two attorneys, and local representatives from ATT for July the 14th. So we've got a telephone conference, so I'd have to do it at that time. Now, I still remain optimistic that we may be able to resolve any final issues and using completely wrapping process before then. And if that does happen, then we'll have it on the January 25th. So at this point, I'd ask that you table it to the next meeting. Or, I'm sorry, until, well, just table it.
Table it.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to table it. Question, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Clippy? Yes. Park?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Budy?
Yes.
Starman?
Yes. Consideration discussion possible, so we'll table a bridge again, but fiscal year 2016 assistance to firefighters grant for the purchase of six striker power load ambulance cot. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. It's an honor to be here tonight again to bring what's the third FEMA grant that we've received in just under two years. This FEMA grant is called the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. It's a little bit different than the other grant in that the others were for salaries for firefighters, this is actually for equipment or supplies. The total cost of this project is $132,000, just over $132,000, and FEMA with their AFG grant is going to pay just over $120,000 of that cost. We have a 10% to their 90% match, so we'll be just at $12,000. And we're also going to have to pay about $6,600 to install these items into our ambulance. The items actually are the power loading cot systems. We already have cots that we bought last year that will integrate with these systems, and these systems will actually reach outside the ambulance and pick the cot up and then bring it into the ambulance. So our firefighters won't have to do the lifting of the cot and of the patients any longer. And a couple statistics, over the last five years, we have, the fire department alone has incurred $1.2 million in back injury costs over the last five years. $500,000 have been attributed to lifting injuries alone. So we're really excited about these costs, believe that they're going to absolutely increase the safety of our firefighters as well as our citizens, because the anchoring system in the ambulances itself is much safer for our citizens who are riding along in case we have any kind of motor vehicle accident. So we would suggest that we accept the FEMA Assistance to Safer Grant, or Assistance to Firefighters Grant for the purchase of six striker power load systems.
So when do you think that we'll have them in place? Since we already have a certain cot, we have to get the ones matching that cost, so is it something we can order soon, or do we have to wait for further funding?
We'll be able to go out immediately almost on these projects, and once the striker can get them to us, we'll go start installing them. And there won't be any transition because the cots that we have today, we're only getting six, but we have a few more ambulances that are reserve ambulances, so our costs will work on these as well as the old mounting systems, and then we're ordering all future ambulances out of the buy. We'll stock it out, or we'll stack it out, and these loading systems come from the manufacturer.
Definitely got hold back from your.
Absolutely.
Any questions?
My first one, I would just say, good job. So I would make a motion to accept the fiscal year 2016 Assistance to Firefighters Grant for the purchase of six striker power load ambulance cot testing system.
Second? Question, second, any discussion?
Roll call, please.
Woody?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 13, consideration discussion, possible approval to terminate purchase order of 110 self-contained breathing apparatuses, SCBA. Jeremy?
Thank you again. Last summer, the fire department decided that we were going to proceed with purchasing new self-contained breathing apparatus, which are the units we wear on our back to go into fires. And we put together a committee, and I have to commend Officer Brian Meyer, who's here tonight, in case we have any extra technical questions. But he put together this committee and did a very rigorous process to identify what products were out there so that we could put together the right systems going forward. As a result of that, in early 2017, we went out to bid, and then February, we issued a purchase order for 110 self-contained breathing apparatus, also called SCBAs, at a cost of 743,607 dollars to Casco Industries for the SCBA brand MSA. Upon receiving them, there were some timeliness issues. They didn't meet the deadlines put forth and the specifications on when they would get them to us. So that was kind of the first red flag for us. And then our training staff, again, under the leadership of Officer Meyer, really went over these SCBAs very closely and began training our newest firefighters on them. And we began to identify a few problems, including an alerting system that are built in that would go off without reason, and we couldn't shut it off unless we took the air packs off, removed the bottle, had to actually go in and turn the battery out of the air packs to try to get them to stop alarming, which would obviously be a disastrous situation if firefighters are in a structural fire trying to extinguish a fire and they had to actually leave to take the bottle, take the whole assembly apart so that it would stop sounding a very loud alarm. Also, we noticed that the masks that we wear during the fire sort of have us in trouble with the exhalation valve, so trying to breathe out of those masks was causing some problems as well, and that raised some concerns. We started visiting with some other organizations who were experiencing similar problems. And then lastly, we noticed that the high pressure hose that delivers the air to the firefighter had some instances where it could be kinked, including the air getting from the air cylinder to the firefighters. So obviously, because this is a life safety device, we felt like it was very important that Officer Meyer and our staff be able to thoroughly look at these malfunctions and the inadvertent alarms for brand-new equipment is completely unacceptable. So we're asking that the council terminate the purchase order and allow us to send these SCBAs that we have received back, and then we'll go through the bid process again.
Any questions?
Make a motion to terminate the purchase order with Tastel Industries, Inc., and plead and authorize the execution of the Tastel Act.
Second.
Question, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woody?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 9D, consideration discussion, possible approval of authorization for sole source purchase of Harris Equipment System upgrades. The Harris Corporation included replacement of primary secretary phones and the five-channel P25 base two communication. I think Mark H. is going to use him.
Good evening, Mayor. Mr. Councilor. Discussion, consideration, and approval of this project we're bringing for you, which is a, it's an upgrade for, you know, public safety in our network. Our current course, we're running a few revisions behind, and it's being that, and that's what we all a few weeks back, and that we are very innovative in what we do, and that we want to make sure that public safety and communication as a whole have the best that is possible out there. So we're going to basically replace our two existing cores. We have a primary and a secondary, which are geographically separated, so we have redundancy built into our network. We're the only one in the state that does that. So it becomes very, very important that you have a type of system in place. On top of that, we're going to build a new P25 site down at our water plant location. They have a 250-foot tower out there. It's going to complement utilities for plant operations and service, so they have communications, which will be encrypted, so we keep all the traffic secure. But it will also assist public safety as well. When there's a big old ridge, as you go out on East Kenosha, we need to backfill that a little bit, so it's going to enhance it as we continue to grow out east and into the Wacker County area. On top of that, we're going to replace all portable radios for public safety. We're going to go to the latest, greatest model that we just won the innovation award from Harris, and that's CXL 200P. It gives them capabilities to talk in our P25 network in a secure fashion from AES encryption. It'll also take them into the future. It has BAM 14, which is the first net, which is a federally program that is moving upward with ATP as well. And it also has Wi-Fi and then it has LTE operations, all in a communication device. It is a very top-notch unit and it's going to work well for public safety. As you're aware, we were, I think, we helped design it right, with Harris. So we go through, you know, through the police side, fireside, bring our fire guys' computers up and handle it. We'll be in pretty good shape. Some errors were very appreciative of that. But we're also going to upgrade all mobile radios. We will not be replacing those. Back when we did our revanning project in 2011, we had enough forethought to at least upgrade the mobiles then, and then on part of this project, Harris will be upgrading the software across the city, and we don't have to replace any mobile equipment. It's still top-line equipment. It's our flagship mobile. So that's going to cost savings as well. So when it's all said and done, we're in pretty good shape. It's all about take care, prepare the guys up, the girls, and make sure they have the best possible secure communications. We've, we stood apart, we took a pretty good beating back in 2011 when we secured, you know, communications. But, you know, this thing needs to be perfected. So we ask for your consideration on this. If you have any questions, I'll answer them.
Any questions, Mark?
Good job. Thank you. Make a motion to approve the purchase of Harris Communication System upgrades specified in the statement of the board, approve and authorize execution of the domestic standard conditions.
Second. Question, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woody?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 9D, consideration discussion, possible approval of PUD 261 and BAZ 1978, Chestnut Creek. All right.
Good evening, council. Planning development, PUD 261 involves approximately 11.06 acres of undeveloped and unplanted property located one quarter of a mile west of the northwest corner of Jasper Street and Ask Maverick. BAZ 1978, required to resell the property from A1 agricultural to RS2 single-family residential, has been submitted in conjunction with this PUD. These applications have been submitted for proposed 34 single-family detached residential development. The property is designated as Level 2 and ring light flood planning in the conference of plan RS2 zoning is considered to be in accordance with the conference of plan Level 2 when it is an extension of the existing RS2 or RS3 zoning district. PUD 261 and BAZ 1978 were recommended for approval by the vote of 3 to 0 by the planning commission in the meeting on May 25th, 2017. One person spoke against the item at the planning commissioning, expressing concerns about the location of utilities along the west section of the property line, building the Iron Core subdivision, and potential drainage problems. Based on the conference of plan, location of property and surrounding land, your staff recommends approval of PUD 261 to be approved, subject to property being planted. The residential portion of the property is located outside 100-year flood plain, shall be designated as RS2, and the portion of the property that is located within the 100-year flood plain shall be designated as AP. I'm here to answer any questions that we may have.
Any questions, Mark?
Make a motion to approve PUD 261 and BAZ 1978, Chestnut Creek, recommended by the planning commissioning staff.
Second. Question, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woody?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 9G, consideration discussion, possible approval of appointed Pablo Rivera to the city of Broken Arrow Board of Adjustments.
I'm actually going to check that, let me see if it's okay. As the council's lawyer, some years ago, we requested the council make a revision to broken river city ordinances involving board adjustment orders. You may recall very recently, we also recommended a change based on the statute to amend to the planning commission statutes. However, that has had the resulting effect of creating a little bit of confusion in terms of nominations in our internal processes. For that reason, I would respectfully request that you table this item until, I believe it's the second meeting in July. That would give staff an opportunity to read the internal processes and bring something to you at the next meeting, hopefully refining council's expectations as well as giving staff some direction on that. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Beth Ann?
Make a motion to table this to the second meeting.
Second. Question, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woody?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 10A, preview ordinances, consideration discussion, possible approval of orders amended in Broken River City ordinances, Chapter 10, power prevention protection. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. This first ordinance has to do with basically a nomination of the laws that we kind of, I can speak about this, the fire marshal is present and he can go through all of the changes if you like, but basically the overall intent of this is just to bring it in compliance with national standards. We have had individuals over the years that have expressed frustration with regard to the existing codes and our position that these particular revisions will ensure the safety of residents and visitors while at the same time giving a little bit more flexibility in terms of enforcement. I would like to recognize that fire marshal, like, he went to a lot of trouble and effort in this particular revision, and it's also, it's my understanding, from those members of the community, that he has done an excellent job in terms of working with individuals that are trying to develop community. I'm happy to answer any questions, as I believe you have any.
Any questions?
Make a motion to review the attached orders and set upon the option.
Second. Question, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woody?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 10B, consideration discussion, possible preview of orders 7.12, mobile food vendors requiring all orders to the contrary. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. The mental vendor ordinance is something that's new in the Broken Arrow code. You may recall that it was previously covered by the actuarian merchant ordinance, which tended to create a little bit of confusion. As you're aware, big trucks continue to gain in popularity and also in terms of individuals requesting pallets and those sorts of things. The Development Services Department has worked very diligently to draft this ordinance and to provide opportunities for these individuals and also our citizens. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Skates is present as well, should you have any questions?
Any questions, Beth Ann? Mark?
Hold on a minute, just real quick on the fees. Is that, it's an annual, is it saying it's going to be an annual 50-hour license fee and then, and then some of them say per day, but then one of them says, has like a day of the year on there?
On the mobile food vending, it's based on each occasion per ordinance, and then each day is particularly to the special, the specific vendor who isn't mobile, is how it's set up.
Okay. So like the stationary ones, the public chairs, which is the 120 a year plus the license fee of 15.
Correct.
Oh.
Any more questions?
Motion, preview of ordinance.
Second. Question, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woody?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 11A, ordinances, consideration discussion, possible adoption of orders 3485. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. This ordinance was previewed at the last meeting. What it does is enables license awards with state statute to increase the fees on wireless telephone connections. We would request the adoption of orders 3485 and 34 emergency contracts.
Any questions?
Make a motion to adopt orders from 3485.
Second. Question, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woody?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 13, remarks, and present by government body members. Any remarks, sir, in parties?
Yes, I'd like to make comment. Councilman, when you brought this to my attention, former councillor, Tony Peddington's in St. Francis Hospital in a coma this afternoon, so I'll just ask everybody to offer a prayer for, for help me in this family. Anything else? I, I think, and I'm sure councillor Parks joins me in this, we saw the night, two of our, I would call them fratricals of the city council, and, and I think it's seeing the success of those young people and as they continue to have success. One, I would commend councillor Parks for his great work on that. That's, I know it's labor, but he's done a great job. And two, I think that seeing tonight is testament of how important that is and why it's something that should continue for a long time to come, because I think it really does a great job in helping train the youth of our community to understand what we do here and why we do what we do here. So I want to reiterate my appreciation for the city for doing that and to commend the grace and greatness of the work. And it's a great program, and it drives everybody, I will.
Well, and certainly support the staff and, you know, funding, these, these kids, they really get a lot of, you know, so we see those success. Jennifer does an excellent, outstanding job of coming to her several times and any acting has needed to be given, it's thanks to her, because she has everything, everything on the ground, so she does a great job as well. It's with all experience, I look at it, being a council and a city every, just period. So I'll have to serve through all of the work that you've done, so.
Anything else? We'll go to item 13, or Mark said, based by city manager, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Just a couple of things real quick. First, I, on behalf of the administration and all the employees, I'd like to thank you for the support of bringing the budget. This council has demonstrated a commitment to providing the resources necessary to provide high-level public service. Like every community, we do have limitations. I want to thank you for your participation in the budget. I'm very excited about this year's budget, not only because of the day-to-day operations and how we'll continue to serve the public, there are some great projects that the council has approved in the capital improvement program, whether it's about 24, 25 million dollars worth of road improvements from bond projects or the new road tax to recreation, basically in San Volibol complex to moving the memorial memorial over into the park to actually creating the memorial gardens on the former beverage property. The projects we're going to be completing this year to maintain high-quality life in the city are just outstanding, and I give you all the kudos and appreciate everything you do for the, the organization. I also want to thank the staff members, the directors, putting a lot of time and effort to, to prepare and defend their proposals. I want to thank everyone in public, along with their staff, and for finance, putting everything together. And I also like to thank the fire department. A hundred twenty thousand dollar grant doesn't sound like a lot, but anytime you can get funding in this day and age from any level of government with the type of challenges they have is awesome. You know, we apply for grants as often as we can, and we're, and they're very competitive, so getting a hundred twenty thousand dollars is, is truly a feat, and I appreciate the cheapness of staff. Next thing is, the next city council meeting will be on April 3rd, that's a Monday, April 3rd is the next, excuse me, April, July 3rd. I won't be on vacation, so that's what I'm going to be saying. I will tell you, I want to mention is that it's come to the council's attention, there's been a lot of discussion about the possibility of gaining out of the property south of town. We are staying on top of that. We, we have made, through the city attorney and myself, we have made our position known that the city is in opposition to any type of gambling on that property. So getting $120,000 is, is truly a feat, and I appreciate the team and staff. Next thing is, the next city council meeting will be on April 3rd. That's a Monday, April 3rd is the next, excuse me, April, July 3rd. I'm on vacation, so that's what I'm going to be saying. I will tell you, I want to mention is that it's come to the council's attention, there's been a lot of discussion about the possibility of gaining out of the property south of town, and we are staying on top of that. We have made, through the city attorney and myself, we have made our position known that the city is in opposition to any type of gaming on that property. We are staying in much communication as we can. However, anything of this concern, there's always going to be rumors in any window that we are unable to control, but we have made our position known both publicly, personally, and in communication where we stand in this particular item. I, I believe the city attorney may provide an update to the council members on July 3rd, should that be necessary. So I want to make sure you're all aware of that. And then finally, we had a couple of folks that deserve some recognition from the Development Service Department. Paul Bigwors passed his commercial building inspection certification test recently, and now has certifications as a commercial building inspector in plumbing, building, and mechanical, and just has electrical left. And Vince Orchetan, he passed his commercial test last month, and he's on his way to completing his certification as well. I just want to send out kudos to both of those individuals in Michael's area for pursuing that and actually just in the higher level of service we can provide for our community. That's all I have.
Thank you. We do have executive session, so I didn't have a bunch to go into a brief recess, so we can have AM and beta. Move. Second. Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimby? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Rudy?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. I'll call the Brooklyn Economic Development Authority to order. Consideration, uh, roll call, please.
Yeah. Wimby?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Rudy?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. We do not have an executive session. Any one more question? I'd like to motion the term. Second. Question second, roll call, please.
Wimby? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Rudy?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 5, General Authority Business. We do have a budget for the Brooklyn Economic Development Authority. Any questions to Michael?
I'd move to approve fiscal year 2017-2018 financial plan for Brooklyn area development plan.
Second. Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimby? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Rudy?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 5, General Authority Business. We do have a budget for the Brooklyn Economic Development Authority. Any questions to Michael?[1737.23]